Mr. Abraham?
Here.
Ms. Bowman?
Here.
Ms. Como?
Here.
Dr. Cooperstol?
Excused.
Dr. Jimenez?
Here.
Ms. Leahy?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Corburg?
Here.
And Mr. Spivey?
Absent. The quorum of the Board of Education is present, so the regularly scheduled meeting of August 2nd, 2021 is called to order. We recognize that the Hogan Administrative Center occupies the land of the Ho-Chunk people. Please take a moment to celebrate and honor the ancestral Ho-Chunk land and the sacred lands of all indigenous peoples. We will now have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and face the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay. Tonight's agenda has previously been distributed to the board with a motion by Mr. Corburg and seconded by Ms. Como. We will move to approve the agenda as submitted unless there is a motion to amend. Is there a motion to amend? All right. So all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion is carried. We will move on to public speakers. It is the policy of the board to provide at its public meetings an opportunity for individuals to address the board. Comments about individual staff and personnel will not be allowed. Open meeting law prohibits the board from engaging in discussion or responding to matters not included on the agenda. All speakers are reminded that this same policy limits your time to speak to five minutes. This limit will be strictly enforced. If I could ask Dr. Harsy to please keep track of the time and to notify the speaker when time is running out? Thank you. You're also asked to give your name and the school district where you reside at the beginning of your time for the public record. Our first speaker tonight is Jaclyn Cuts.
Good evening. My name is Jackie Cuts and we reside in the School District of La Crosse. I currently work as the Public Health Nursing Manager at the La Crosse County Health Department, where I oversee the communicable disease investigation, vaccination, and public health nursing teams. I'm sorry, I have a developmentally delayed toddler. Come here. I hold both a nursing degree as well as a master's in public health from Emory University in Atlanta, Georgia. I'm here tonight representing both myself and my husband, who is a physician and fifth-year surgical resident at Gunderson. Please note that we are not here in an official capacity and not representing the views of our institutions. Instead, we're here as advocates with a high degree of subject matter expertise and as parents who have three children attending school in the La Crosse School District. In light of the Delta variant, we are here to urge you to follow federal, state, and local public health guidance to institute universal masking for all staff and students regardless of the local case rate, vaccination status, or grade, which is especially important for those who are most vulnerable to severe disease and death. Our rising sixth grader and oldest child, Jacob, has juvenile arthritis and a genetic connective tissue disorder that impacts his joints and digestive system and could progress to involve his heart and vision. For these conditions, he receives injections of immunosuppressive medication every week. As a result of him being immunocompromised, a COVID infection could be detrimental to his health. To keep him safe, we've kept all four of our children at home for the last year, leaving our home rarely and taking very calculated risk. This has meant that in addition to working both full-time or double full-time hours to protect the health of our community, we've had three children doing virtual schooling for fifth grade, second grade, and kindergarten. The teachers were fantastic and we appreciated their support, but it was a very challenging year for our family. We all need them to return to in-person school, and I think that's a goal that all parents and educators can agree on. Our children do better when they are safely attending school in person and seeing their peers. But that will only be safe, especially for kids like Jacob, if the school environment is as protective as it possibly can be. As the parents of a special needs child and as health professionals, we think about the other families that are in the same place we are. It is terrifying to wake up and feel like if you decide to send your kid to school, you might be sending your child into an environment that could literally kill them. School has always been a happy, enriching, empowering place for our children, and it needs to stay that way, especially for the children for whom a COVID infection would be a very big deal. We have very much appreciated your thoughtful leadership over the past year and your determination to follow the best guidance available. We know that it was not an easy task and that you stood your ground when many people asked you not to. We are very proud to call La Crosse our home school district, and we think the approach you took over the last year made sense in balancing the needs of COVID reprieve with the need to prevent disease. We also acutely feel how very tired we all are of hearing about COVID. But the Delta variant changes the game, and it's our hope that you will respond in kind. The Delta variant causes 1,000 times the viral load that the ancestral strain of SARS-CoV-2 did. Each case infects far more people than the original strain, and it takes as little as 30 seconds of exposure rather than 15 minutes for a person to be exposed and then convert to being a case. This means that every close contact will have a much higher likelihood of converting to being a case than they did before, especially if mitigation measures to protect that risk are not enforced. Per Friday's MMWR released by the CDC, the Delta variant is also causing more breakthrough cases. Eighty percent of COVID-19 samples being sequenced in our state of Wisconsin and our National Public Health Region are returning as the Delta variant, which explains our recent rise in cases. The overall seven-day confirmed case rate was more than 14-fold higher on July 31st than it was on July 1st. And the case rate for our unvaccinated population is more than four times higher than it is for our fully vaccinated population. Here, want to play with this? This is especially important given that the majority of COVID-19 students, or the majority of K-12 students are not yet vaccinated against COVID and likely won't be until fall or winter. Given the increase, before school is even in session, it is critical to disease prevention and to our shared goal of keeping students in person that we use every mitigation measure available to us. Thank you, thank you. Both the American Academy of Pediatrics and the CDC are recommending that schools layer mitigation strategies to prevent COVID spread in schools and in the community, which are specifically recommended to include vaccination for all who are eligible, universal masking regardless of vaccination status, cohorting, appropriate ventilation, testing, robust contact tracing, and adherence to isolation and quarantine protocols. All right, what was that? Our son, who is among the children who need in-person services the most, should not be required to do another at-home year of learning and get further behind to simply survive sixth grade, especially when the simple act of masking could make school safer for him. We entrust our children to the School District of La Crosse for their educational needs because we know that you are far better prepared to meet those needs than we are. We ask you to do the same, that you place your trust in public health and healthcare professionals such as those at the American Academy of Pediatrics, the CDC, and the Wisconsin Department of Health Services by adhering to their guidance for layered mitigation strategies, which should include universal masking for all students and staff without exception. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will move on to approval of the superintendent's consent agenda. The consent agenda is a mechanism used by the board to deal with routine business that must come before the body. Are there any items that the members want to remove from the consent agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the items on the superintendent's consent agenda as presented.
Second.
With a motion by Mr. Corburg and seconded by Ms. Como, the items on the superintendent's consent agenda are approved as presented unless there is objection. Hearing no objection. We'll move on to the approval of the board consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the items on the board consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Are there any items that the members want to remove from the consent agenda? Hearing none, then with a motion by Mr. Corburg and seconded by Ms. Como, the items on the board consent agenda are approved as presented unless there is objection. Hearing none. We will move on to matters reserved for board action and the 2020-2021 final fund balance designations. Dr. Harsy?
I'll make a motion to accept the final 2021 committed, assigned, and unassigned fund balance designations as presented.
Second.
All right. So moved by Mr. Corburg and seconded by Ms. Como to accept the final 2020-2021 committed, assigned, and unassigned fund balance designations as presented. Anybody with any comments?
Can I ask for clarification of what this document is saying?
Sure.
Thank you.
So as the year ends, we have our fund balances in all of our funds, and we are required to designate, restrict, assign, commit. And the important part is commit for the board. The part that you are committing needs to be approved and documented such, so that our auditors can see that. So some of the funds are restricted just by the nature of them, debt or capital projects. Also, unused common school funds have their own designation, and that's used for our library and media. The other thing is that fund balance is not cash in the bank. Fund balance, actually, at the end of this year, we had over $12 million in receivables, so dollars that we don't have on hand. So then we go through this document. We have our non-spendable dollars, those are prepaid. Our restricted fund balance, as I said, things like the Common School Fund, capital projects, debt service, our scholarships that have been moved to Fund 21, where they used to be in trust, but that is no longer allowable according to our new GASP 84. And then, of course, school nutrition, the dollars are reserved for school nutrition. So in the committed area, the changes here are the capital expenditure building renovation. So last year, you had approved 3.5 million use of fund balance for the Hamilton Project. And of that 3.5 million, we still have 1.15 left. So we still have bills coming in, as you know that that project is coming to an end. The others are committed dollars just for capital expenditures and any kind of budget shortfall due to COVID. So we don't know what the future brings as far as building adjustments or changes that will not be covered by federal funding. And then the assigned fund balance is dollars set aside for certain reasons. The Community Service Fund is what's left in Fund 80 after the school year is over. And also the donations is Fund 21, amounts that have been contributed to us but have not yet been used. The others are breakdowns of areas that we have set aside dollars for those needs. So then the unassigned fund balance. Our fund balance policy requires that we have 15% to 20% of our year-to-date expenditures set aside. And 3 million of that is for revenue stabilization, meaning all of these federal funds that are coming in, we spend those before we actually get the money because they are reimbursement. So that 3 millions kind of sets aside dollars to use until we get the reimbursement from the federal government. Then the unassigned fund balance for working capital needs, that 20 million is for cash flow. And that has to do with that we have more expenditures than revenues in most months of our years, July through December, and then again in April and May. This allows us to not have to short-term borrow so that we can pay our staff and pay our bills in those months, that we don't have the revenue set aside. So there is a change with the new budget that we should be able to get our equalization aid within the fiscal year instead of waiting till July for that last payment. So that will help a lot of districts with their cash flow. And then the other two areas are the amount for contingencies and emergencies, and then what's left over is just other. So the amount that we need to have in our fund balance as unassigned according to policy this year is about 23 million. And we'd have that if you add up those unassigned values. Any questions?
What are we expecting yet as far as the Hamilton Project? Did we get all the monies that were expected from like the donors that we had?
Good question. We have about $800,000 of donations that we are still expecting. But otherwise, we've received quite a bit, and that goes into Fund 41. And these expenditures that are not covered by contributions which come out of fund balance go through the general fund.
And just for clarification, with the balances in 2020-2021, would those essentially just be carryover into the balance for next year, for 2020, the next school year? Or is this is what's left?
This is what's left.
Right. So then for the next school year, starting in the fall, would this balance then be carried over into that?
This is what we have designated for these areas for the following year.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
And a question, Patty, on the cash flow piece. So you said that the budget, this is the state budget, right? That they've changed it now so that you can get those funds during the school year. So do you foresee making a change in this, in the future about what we set aside for unassigned cash flow?
I would in the next coming year. We'll see how it goes this year.
Sure.
They haven't decided how they're going to do that or when. So we might just end up getting everything in June, which still isn't going to help us from July through December.
Sure. Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Please.
Between the committed fund balance and the assigned fund balance of budget shortfalls for COVID, there's over $3.1 million if you add them all up between 2019 and 2021. Are we that far?
Is the shortfall that large?
It is not right now. This is for unexpected. So we have a lot of federal funds that are supporting learning loss and those types of things. But because since COVID, everything is so unpredictable, we want to make sure we have funds set aside that if we would have to do some kind of major change that was very expensive and not have the federal funds to cover it, that we have money set aside for that purpose.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of accepting the final 2020-2021 committed, assigned, and unassigned fund balance designations as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is carried. We'll move on to the information portion. And the first item on the information portion is the Operational Expectation Monitoring Report, OE 9, Communicating with the Public and Key Stakeholders. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Harsy.
Yeah, thank you. So I will just make mention here that, just for the record, Dr. Engel and Dr. Cooperstol are unable to be with us tonight because they're both presenting, I think jointly, and maybe Dr. Cooperstol has an additional solo presentation with the Wisconsin Public Education Network for their summer summit. So Dr. Engel has asked me to step in and pinch-hit on his report tonight with OE 9, which I'm happy to do so. Ironically, it's about effective communication. I can take a short report and make it long, and I can take a long report and make it painful. So I'll do my best here with this particular communication report. The good news is that Dr. Engel has done a great job, given particularly all of the aspects with being a new superintendent, COVID, and a variety of different aspects. And he highlights a few pieces here. One of the things he says is, yep, this is primarily responsibility of the superintendent's office, but it's everybody's responsibility in the School District of La Crosse to be an effective communicator with our stakeholders and our public, which we all believe to be true. He does highlight a few pieces here, including regular communication with staff and parents, significant public engagement around a few areas, including the SRO Program Report, the District Strategic Plan for Educational Equity, long-range facility planning, and continual engagement with local media. And in the summary report piece on that first page, he also does say that future modifications to measures and indicators based on school board feedback is something that he's certainly looking forward to. And at our next board meeting, August 16th, we'll be bringing this back again. I would like to, if I can, just dig into a few of these pieces here. So with this particular operational expectation, part of the charge is for the superintendent to ensure that the public is adequately informed about the condition and direction of the district. So this includes timely flow of information, appropriate input from the community, and strategic two-way communication between the district and the public that builds understanding and support for the district efforts. And so this is done to both inform and then importantly, to build public confidence. I think that's an important aspect of this particular OE towards the district's vision and the direction that the district is heading. So how does all this get accomplished? So back in February, February 17th specifically, board supported the interpretations and then the indicators. And so diving into 9.1, and then after 9.1, I'll stop and, you know, answer questions that folks might have, and then we'll get into 9.2. So 9.1, information to stakeholders will be, you know, it says done in a timely flow. And this included weekly updates to families and staff that were emailed and then posted on the website, and those are hot links for folks to go ahead and take a look at. Last board meeting, we heard from our Director of Community Services, Kurt Teff. He presented the code of rights and responsibilities and the stakeholders that were involved in the development of that as an example of evidence. And then the school board meetings, of course, and you're very well of war docs and the posting of all that information. Indicator two, the superintendent shall engage in two-way communication regarding the direction of the district and to build understanding and support for the district. So on at least a monthly basis, Dr. Engel, excuse me, would meet with a variety of groups, and you can see from district-wide parents to Rotary Club, La Crosse Chamber, et cetera. Many of you are familiar with NAMI, I'm sure, but just for the good of the whole, that acronym is National Alliance on Mental Illness, just for those who aren't necessarily familiar with that acronym. Another piece of evidence, and again, you're all very familiar with this, the SRO Program Review. He, Dr. Engel, met with a very wide breadth of community members, had listening sessions and focus groups, and then of course, the long-range facility planning process, which is ongoing still. Further evidence includes the District Strategic Plan for Educational Equity, and you can see a list of groups and individuals that were deeply involved with the development of that plan. Indicator three, towards the bottom, the district communicates with, communicates emergency and safety notices, district school closing delays, reminders of alternate schedules, and school delays, and translates all of those messages as well. And then those are posted on websites as well. And then the traditional, and then our 4515 or year-round calendar. And indicator four, this has, you know, Nick Markku's fingerprints all over it. As you can see, news releases and story ideas are submitted weekly to the local paper while school's in session. And there's just a few of the examples put as evidence there. There are countless examples to be shared, but there's just a few. As promised, I'll take just a breath here, but any questions on 9.1?
Any questions from the board?
I'm just interested to know, do you know the open rate for the emails sent to families?
Oh, I don't know. I'm sure that's information that Nick might be able to parse out, but I'm not sure.
Okay. I was just wondering.
I don't know if you've ever, because like I turn off return receipt, so you might not ever know. Like if you sent me something from, to my personal email and you wanted to know whether or not I opened it, I have that turned off. So they would never know whether or not I opened that email, so.
Can you send it through? I know I've sent through other systems where you can tell the open rate.
Well, I'm curious too if we know, because, you know, we might receive it via by a text message or, you know, different way. So it's one thing, you're saying it's one thing to send it, it's another thing to see if it was received and opened and the engagement. Yeah, so, yeah, I'm not sure.
And I don't know what I would do to change that anyway, but I was just wondering if you knew, so, thank you.
I would say similarly, thinking about that, also thinking about how often. I don't think I'll talk that loud. But also thinking about how often are folks clicking a website? Like I know that we can monitor that, so maybe that might be something worth including in this document. How often are people visiting a website? There's even ways where you can kind of tell what are the top pages. And then also adding like how often are people opening the emails if they're, if that's trackable? I feel like it should be evidenced in this too.
Looking at MSP, I would think, Michael St. Pierre, sorry, we use nicknames around here, would, website clicks would be a lot easier for us to monitor than, you know, if they're necessarily opening, but, yeah.
And I think the other thing that I, not necessarily a question, more of a comment around this section around communication. I know we've talked about this in the past and kind of wondering if there's anything that's been done about it around employees feeling like they're not always in the know about things that are happening in the district. I know there are some things that come before the board before you can tell staff, but have those things been kind of cleared up and communicated with staff to let them know the protocol, so to speak, of disseminating information amongst the staff?
For us, that's a never-ending kind of, you know, there's, one of my favorite quotes is about the illusion of communication, you know, that it's actually happened. And so that's something that we're continually working toward. It's a never-ending, it's a goal that's always kind of missed that we try to grab. So is it cleared up? I'd say no. Is it a continual goal? I'd say yes.
Okay. And then that same question around, I know we had talked about getting folks to understand the governance structure. So similarly with the staff and the teachers and administrators, do you feel like they're fully, that's been communicated to them in terms of the way in which the school board's operating in terms of the governance structure?
I would echo my last response. You know, I think about even like coming up here, we start to onboard all of our new staff, and I think about that, you know, rinse recycle that we do every year. I think it's an ongoing process of us needing to continually re-educate. You know, here's what we're about in our district with our governance, coherent governance style, and here's how it works, and, yeah. There's no hitching post with communication, right? There's no sunset, there's no finish line, but it's something you got to keep working on and recognize that you're never done.
Yeah.
Well, I know we added stuff to, or a statement to our linkages with staff so they knew the type of governments that we have and that, why we were there and then, and, you know, so there's a statement now at least. So again, that's not the catch-all, the end-all, but at least it's another reinforcement of what it sounds like the district office is doing, is trying to inform them about it.
And that statement is on the documents that's further down?
Yeah, it's in the documents that's coming up.
9.2, are we ready? Then we can field some more questions. Okay. So in 9.2, you know, part of the board expectation, obviously, is for the superintendent to write a comprehensive and relevant reporting to the community annually around, you know, three main areas: student achievement, instructional programming, and the financial health of the district. And you have a little bit of that. And you have a little bit of that here tonight. You're gonna have some results policies, you're gonna hear more about, you know, our annual budget process has several sections before it's complete, and you're gonna hear a little bit more about those than some reports yet. But, part of what we do is also a school district performance report link that we provide. Of course, there's no school report card in 1920, but that's primarily what that link leads to. The superintendent should also make available to the board and all community stakeholders link to the district's annual adopted budget. Patty and the team do a very excellent job, obviously, with laying that out each year. And then finally, no surprise to this group, certainly, superintendent shall post all Board of Education business meeting agendas, meeting materials, minutes with the state, in accordance with state open meeting laws. And through board docs, we do that. And the team that we have with Laura Staggerwald, et cetera, does a great job. But, questions on 9.2? Questions?
So, if I could just ask for the board to just kind of give their thoughts about, do we feel that we are comfortable with the superintendent's recommendation on this one? Or do we feel that we may have to make an adjustment here? Any thoughts?
Fairly true, but Dr. Engel has been more than communicative with me, always open, always available, the one-on-one meetings, certainly, it's pretty easy to get a hold of him and hear what he has to say.
You know, I think he's answered them. What we're asked, what we've asked of, what's in this document we've asked, has been answered.
Yes.
Now, if there's other stuff that we want to put in there eventually, that's another topic and for another time, but I'm comfortable with it.
Yeah, I don't hear any concerns. So, thank you, everybody. Let's move on to R 2.3, the Results Monitoring Report for Academic Performance, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Hershey.
Well, and we'll bring up Dr. Lahucki at this time, our Director of Curriculum Instruction Assessment. I know he's been working on really the next two reports, but we'll talk now about R 2.3 Academic Performance, and we'll put the ball on the tee and let him take it away from here.
First, I'd like to thank Dr. Hershey for taking over the reports tonight for Dr. Engel and myself. No, not so much. Okay. So, the first report I have is Results Policy 2.3, Develop Skills Necessary for Lifelong Learning. In previous board reports, I've talked about the purpose, I think, of results policies are to generate data that's actionable for students and to improve systems. And it wasn't necessarily about creating new all the time, but it was refining what we do to generate better results. And that's where I think Redefining Ready comes in, which is, I guess, what I would call Results Policy 2.3, otherwise known as. What Redefining Ready is, it's redefining the way school accountability looks. We're used to the school report card, which is essentially one standardized test for a student, slice and dice and different algorithms. And I can take that data and go from school district to school district and get different results. That's, that's, that's hard to explain to people. Redefining Ready is an initiative, it's a national initiative by superintendents around the country that has gained some traction in the state of Wisconsin. There are a number of Redefining Ready school districts. It matches very well with Results Policy 2.3. And wanting to take some time to go through the data that is before you tonight, and as I said, there are no new data points here. It's just a relook at what we traditionally have in our system. So, why do Redefining Ready? I mentioned before, our kids are more than a test score. And I think that alone would be a good reason to do it. That people define themselves based on an ACT score, I don't know if that's right. So, there are benchmarks for college-ready, but also career-ready, and I'll talk about what the two of them look like. Secondly, it's individually focused, whereas oftentimes, if I report data to the board, it is the senior class, or here's a whole school's report card. With Redefining Ready, we look student by student to look at the criteria to see how they're doing. And it's used to motivate. When we ingrain Redefining Ready into our schools, it allows counselors to have conversations with students and stakeholders to say, hey, if you want to be career-ready, here's some indicators to work for, here's why it matters. And when you're done, now you have something a student has for their transcript, a student has something for their resume, that they, when asked, why are you ready to enter the world of work? And they can specifically tell you. I think there's power in that, and that's what Redefining Ready can give. Thirdly, I use the national indicators as a starting point, and I specifically say starting point, meaning that we have the opportunity in the school district of La Crosse to customize what we value as far as what our graduates look like to get ready for the world of work, the military, or post-secondary education. And so, this is a starting point, not an ending point. And in my discussions with different stakeholders, I anticipate when I come forward next year, you'll probably see some different benchmarks here that have been put forth by our community and stakeholder groups. So, the first page that you see is the cover page. This just gives you an overall view of the different Redefining Ready categories. Each of these is research-based, but not pulled out of the air. Students that are college-ready, pass AP tests, and passing is a score of three or higher, the overall percentage is there. Students also can be Redefining Ready by getting a C or higher in a course. When you take an AP course, you receive a letter grade, but you don't receive that college credit unless you pass that particular course, which is, you know, without college board here to defend themselves, that's a different conversation. But you can prove your worth as an academic student by achieving in the day-to-day classroom rather than a one-size-fits-all standardized test, which last year, this data is represented by an AP test that was taken at home, monitored over video, and in a written format. So, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison compared to previous years. Dual credit. So, we have a lot of opportunities to receive dual credits in the school district of La Crosse. We're fortunate for that, and we look to improve those opportunities. But being successful with college credit-bearing courses is an indicator of future college success. Algebra II. Where Algebra II comes in line, it's more, we are trying to set the stage to take rigorous coursework. The sort of research is, if you are successful in a course such as Algebra II, generally you are ready for college, and the percentage for the district is listed there. Overall grade point of a 2.8 or higher. And then, there is a standardized test component, and that's the ACT college-ready indicators, meaning that you need that minimum score in all of those categories. If you're short on one of those categories, then you're not deemed college-ready, at least for the ACT college readiness benchmarks. So, the way you are determined to be college-ready is one of two ways. First of all, is that ACT by hitting all those benchmarks, or two of the other criteria that I just mentioned. So, if you pass an AP test, and you'll also get a C or higher, and you don't have the ACT results, you would be college-ready. The career-ready indicators that we have are attendance rate freshman year. This is for graduating seniors. And you may wonder, why are we tracking the attendance for seniors in their freshman year? Your attendance rate, your freshman year, is eight times more predictive of future success than your eighth-grade grades. When we engage our freshmen, we engage them in co-curriculars, we engage them in coursework, and their rest of their high school career is on a trajectory for success. So, we do want to measure that ninth grade. Imagine that counselor having that, that eighth-grade counselor having that conversation about what high school looks like, what are, what does it take to be successful? These are some of the discussions that can happen at that particular time. Two or more co-curricular participation, students who are involved are more ready for the career, they're our career-ready. Dual credit career pathway course, you'll notice that's awfully high. That's because personal finance in La Crosse is a credit-bearing course for the most part, so we do have a high amount of students that generate, just about all of our students that graduate from the school district of La Crosse have the opportunity to have college credit. And then, career-based experiences and industry-based certification is awfully low. Last year, our community wasn't so receptive to have high school students in their workplace. So, that number will move next year, but know that that's something we track, and it is a great indicator of being ready for the career workforce. As I mentioned, these are the starting points for our benchmarks, not our ending points, and it gives, and it gives us something to work for and have some conversations throughout next year. The remaining reports for Redefining Ready take that overall number and break it down by different reference groups. So, you can see, for example, 52.3% of our students are college-ready, but then different reference groups, that number varies. Now, I want to make clear that this data is reflected within the reference group. So, for example, students who identify as Hispanic, you see 33.3%. That is, if there were 100 students that graduated from us that identify as Hispanic, 33 point, oh, can't be 0.3, but 33 students would be college-ready. So, it's within that group, it's not the overall total, just to make that clear. So, each of the indicators is broken down. I will say you can see the same trends, for better or for worse, you see the same trend in just about every data point that I have here between the different reference groups. And that point, I think, is highlighted if you look at the very back page, there's a summary where this is more of the reference group summary of, so you could see overall numbers, and then for each of the Redefining Ready indicators, and then broken down by the reference group in one place. So, you can, you can tackle this data in a number of different ways. The cover sheet, back to the cover sheet, where it says 2021, this is where the longitudinal data will live. So, next year, there'll be a 21-22, and you'll be able to see progress in each of these indicators, along with probably some new looks at some of our data as well. What I personally appreciate about this data, it's actionable. It is individual, it is having those conversations with students and stakeholders, rather than that holistic, here's how we're doing as a school, do well on a standardized test because it helps the school kind of approach. This is more about, hey, this is, this is your future, let's do it together. Do you have any questions about Results Policy 2.3?
Questions from the board?
I agree. First, thank you for presenting this. I'm curious to know if you were able to retroactively go back and look at previous years to see growth or decline?
It's hard. So, it's really hard. Like, for example, looking at the freshman attendance rates of this year's graduating seniors, that was an awfully big lift on our systems. So, this year was a lot of systems building. Some of these, I could absolutely look back and be able to generate that longitudinal, but I thought to keep it clean, I would just go with it. This is kind of our COVID-year data, graduating class. Next year, you'll get more of that longitudinal look. So, like, there are some of these that I have, could do, and actually have been presented to the board previously, just not in this format.
Yeah. I like this format, so that's what I'm asking.
Thank you.
Other questions? Brenda?
Were there any surprises that you found when you saw the data?
It's a, it's a hard question to answer because I'm never surprised by data. Data is what it is, and it's our response to it that I think is where focus is more than anything. If I were going to take away a surprise, I would say, it didn't matter what data I looked at, I saw the reference group's performance essentially the same, which means that we need a lot of work, that there's a lot of systems work that has to happen to make change, because there just wasn't that shining light in one of these data points that I could say, okay, let's take this, and what do we do as a system and apply it differently? So, that's a good question.
Thank you.
I'm curious, what are some of the solutions or thoughts that you all have coming forward to kind of, I'm looking at like the zeros, for example, like, what's the plan to move those up?
Well, step number one is to get this data in front of people. Right now, you, previously, we talked about communication. This is the first anybody's seen this data. So, my first job is to work with the high school principals and the middle school principals, just to get their, we've had discussions about it, but they haven't seen the actual data. I do think it takes a team to get this work done. Counselors will play a very important role in determining, a lot of these are class-dependent. So, why aren't students taking Algebra II? Right? So, let's talk about that. What does your pathway look like? When you're starting to take those courses in your freshman year, what does that look like? What does our transition system looks like between eighth and ninth grade? Those are areas I think we can focus on. We have an academic and career planning team that will be critical to put this work forward. I anticipate this is ground zero. And when you shine a light like we are here, I think it leads to action.
Sounds good.
Other questions? The only one that I had, Dr. Lahucki, and this is more just for personal curiosity, you'd mentioned that this is based on some research. I was just curious if there is a place I can go look at that research?
Sure. The website is on the Redefining Ready, there's a CISA VII link.
Okay.
That will then take you to the national organization where this research kind of lives a little bit more intimately.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Yeah, I'm used to seeing 2.6 as a GPA that's considered a predictor, so I'm really curious to see how that has evolved over time. So, I appreciate the report. Thank you very much. With that, any concerns about this report where you believe that we would not say that it is, that we would agree with the superintendent's recommendation? Any concerns with that? Not hearing any. Okay. Hearing none, then let's move on to Results Monitoring Report 3.1, the Involved Citizenship. I'll turn it over to Dr. Hershey again.
Well, do you want to sit down and then just come back to yourself, or you? Okay.
Results Policy 3.1, Understanding Exercise the Rights and Responsibilities of Citizenship in Our Democratic Society. So, whereas I think the Redefining Ready data that I just explained is a lever where we can really move our systems and make change, I think, I think it had a big swing and a miss when it came to the civics. In my mind, I thought that this might be a good data point for our stakeholders. It was the first attempt for students to pass the civics exam. When you take a deeper dive on that, it is a legislatively mandated compliance piece, for a lack of a better term, in schools in Wisconsin. The answer key is online, which does lend to less robust data. It is also a graduation requirement, meaning that students are going to pass by multiple attempts. And we don't typically track how many attempts it takes to get there because we want students to pass. So, once they pass, they don't have to take it anymore. If they don't pass, then there's opportunities for them to look at where they may have taken some incorrect answers, and then get another opportunity. So, this isn't, when we get the opportunity to, we look at the indicators, this will be one that I'm going to recommend that we pull out and try to find a replacement, candidly. The other one, though, is student voter registration, which is, I think, a very interesting data point for a number of reasons. So, first of all, not all of our seniors are 18 when they graduate. So, when you look at this data, we did take out the 17-year-old graduating seniors, because, you know, we went back and forth, like, I went back and forth, like, should I include them in, knowing that we'll never have a chance at 100%, and that seems like a defeatist way of looking at this data. The second thing I would say is, if this number were, if I looked at this number as of November 3rd, meaning that if we looked at the students that were registered, that were seniors, that were 18, that were registered, that actually voted in the election, and we looked at the actual voter registration for La Crosse County, so they were registered, it was 52.7%. So, we had 52% of our eligible seniors vote. So, what I think I need to do is work with our high school principals to get a second round of voter registration to happen in May, so we recapture more students next year, so they're registered for the next election. Or maybe... more students, uh, next year, uh, so they're registered for the next election, or maybe even before April, if it's a year that we, um, we, we have some things to vote on in April. Uh, so those are some lessons learned from the year, but I just wanted to kind of clarify the data a little bit, because twenty-five percent seems a lot lower than what our actual voter turnout is, but this represents the entire senior class, and many of them weren't eligible to vote, uh, at the time of the election, the first election.
Any questions from the board?
One thing that I think would be helpful, and this goes back to the other data sets as well, is maybe adding something around population size, so that we can see the total of how many, like, Hispanic, Latinx students, right?
Right.
Um, 'cause I think that helps me when it comes to figuring out some of the numbers.
Right, right. And, and, and so generally speaking, the sample size, if you get below an N-number of five, it's not publicly reportable. Um, and I will say, there is a couple of the reference groups here that are awfully close to five. So I took the approach of error on the side of caution, but I can go down to that N-side of five and you could see the groups, or perhaps I could pick a number that would be a little bit higher, because I hate to single out, um, some of our students that graduated, um, that might be identifiable in some way, um, that, that were minors, uh, even. So, I, I don't know what your thoughts are as far as that size goes. I know what you mean about context. Would I, yeah?
I mean, I think even, so like on here, you have NA for certain ones. I think that would be fine, too, even with the raw number. Uh, but for those that are above, let's say, let's go ten, um, if they're above ten, maybe listing that number out as opposed to...
Yeah, I could do that. Uh, native Hawaiian or Pacific Islander, I can tell you that number's zero. So we don't have a single senior that identified, that, so NA was pretty easy there.
Right.
But zero indicates that we did have students identified in that way, and that was the result.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? I'm hearing none. Uh, any concerns with, uh, the superintendent's, uh, recommendation on this one? And thank you, Dr. Lahuki, for answering my question, because when I saw that hundred percent, I thought, well, is that what we are hoping for on the civics exam? You know, is that, is that something that we need to adjust? So I appreciate your insights on that.
No, pen, pencil to paper, uh, uh, I'm trying to find another indicator, I believe.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. We'll move on to the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two proposed budget and personnel staffing. Oh, Dr. Harsy?
I, I believe, okay, I'm standing up, so, okay. Let's welcome, I think, maybe for his inaugural report here, Director of Human Resources.
Four weeks in.
Matt Wethey, yeah, well, welcome, welcome to the podium.
Thank you. So on the top of page one of the personnel summary, um, you will see a breakdown of staffing over the last two years and the current projections for the upcoming school year. Uh, this is a living document, and we are still making changes, but this is the current snapshot. You will receive an updated copy during the October presentation. You'll note that the biggest change is in the teacher category. While there were a few positions decreased by attrition and reduced staffing based on student needs, there is an overall increase of about twelve-and-a-half positions, and this reflects the addition of academic and behavior success coaches in each of our schools. These were added using ESSER funds with the goal of closing academic gaps and addressing student needs. Otherwise, the addition to administration reflects the career and technical education coordinator position that was previously a contracted service through CISA. Uh, it's a position that we hope, as, as Dr. Lahuki just talked about with the workforce, that we hope to increase that number. Uh, there's also a point-five change in duties for Garrett Zimmerman, who is now overseeing the Cooley Region Virtual Academy, as well as his previous role. Due to declining enrollment, there is a slight decline in the other categories. Under the non-union category, there is still a potential addition for a social worker shared with the county. On pages two and, two through four, there's a breakdown of elementary, middle, and high school needs, and on page five, there's a breakdown of teacher assistant positions. So once again, this is our current snapshot of personnel, which makes up, makes up the majority of the district budget. Patty, is there anything else that I should touch on?
Oh, great job.
Yeah, all right. Any questions?
Any questions for our director of HR, Ms. White? Looks like you're getting off.
All right.
I tried to find a really hard question to ask you for your inaugural time, but couldn't think of one. You did a great job.
Call me up at three AM, what are you thinking?
Sounds good. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two proposed budget preliminary budget estimates and revenue limit projections. Turn over to Dr. Harsy.
And I think this one, we'll go back over to our executive director of Business Services. Patty Spring, so keep it up here at the table.
So, this, this is really preliminary, but what it is, is in the year of a biennial budget, it's to give us some kind of indication of how it affects us. So some of these you'll see again in the budget plan document, but a lot of this information will change. On the first page, uh, it is just saying, in what categories the state funding, uh, will increase, and of course, you might have heard the general school aids is, they are increasing. However, that does not increase our capability to, uh, spend. So then also the categorical aids, there's a slight increase there. Uh, that would include your special ed aid, which is a slight increase. There's some categorical aid for mental illness grants that have increased. The school levy and first dollar credits are dollars that fall under the education state budget, however, they do not go directly to schools. They go to the municipalities to offset the tax impact. And then, uh, the state resident schools, there is a slight increase. So the, um, as far as the school levy and first dollar credits, there is no increase for the next two years, so those remain the same. The state voucher program, the funding per student has increased slightly. Um, the provision that the governor had in there for municipalities to be required to report how much, uh, of our levy is because of school vouchers was, uh, left out of the budget, so, um, municipalities won't be, uh, required to report that. So the next page, this is just some information that does not appear in the budget book, but it is important to look at. So our open enrollment state aid adjustment, uh, is going up slightly. It's usually comparable to the voucher amount, but as you can see, the voucher amount for regular ed is a little bit higher than the open enrollment. This is the, uh, money that we, uh, send back and forth through public schools. So if our, uh, students are attending another district, we would have to send them those dollar amounts, uh, per, uh, special ed or regular ed. The, um, then the other is the, and the open enrollment and the per pu, uh, per pupil categorical aid, uh, well, the per pupil categorical aid is above the revenue limit, so it's outside of the revenue limit. So as you can see, uh, there is no increase for the per pupil categorical aid, and that's based on a three-year average of our revenue limit membership. So, uh, the estimate for the three-year membership for twenty-one, twenty-two is, uh, of course, going down because of declining enrollment. So without any increase to that amount, the aid in that category goes down. And the next page. So here's our revenue limit increase history. And again, there is that chart on the bottom, which Dr. Engel has been using a lot in our, um, long-range facility planning, where it shows that that per pupil increase on the years, uh, has gone back now to zero for the next two years. So there's no increase in our revenue limit per pupil for the next two years. And then, oh, and then, so this is the revenue limit state aid and local levy impact. This is really, really preliminary. Don't even look at it as far as, as, as Bible, because it's, it's just is not ready yet. But it does give you some indication that based on the DPI's estimate of general aid for our district, um, that our aid is going to go up, just as they said it would, meaning that the levy would go down if our, uh, total levy remains pretty much the same. So this is just an estimate, but I can tell you right now that, um, that rev, that aid, the general aid will actually probably go down based on our actual expenditures during twenty-twenty-one. So that is, I think, everything I have for you. Um, any questions?
Any questions from the board?
So you will see this last page and the first page again in the budget book, but then we will point out to you the changes that will come in October and September when we knew our aid, our pupil count, uh, all those good things.
A question I would have for you, Patty, just as, um, to, to explain, um, so we see school aids and categorical aids, we do see an increase there, but that doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to get more money coming in because it affects the amount we can levy. Is that correct?
Correct.
Right. And so, could you just explain a little bit about that as well? Because you do such a great job at the long-range facility planning.
So, right. So when we have a, a increase in the per pupil increase, that means that our, our revenue limit can increase based on our, our amount of pupils. And then, it remains in the base for the next year, so it builds. But if you don't have any increases, there's no building. So we might be losing students, but we're not gaining any revenue. So this is why we have to look at our staffing compared to our students, and, um, and then, of course, if there is no increase in the revenue limit, but there's an increase in general aid, it just means that the state is giving us more and the local taxpayers will have to pay less. It doesn't give us any more dollars for our students. Okay? Does that answer?
Yes, perfect. Thank you so much. And then also, I mean, the, our third Friday count is such an important aspect of this as well.
Is very important. So that is our, our membership used for our revenue limit.
Yes. Wonderful. Thank you very much. Any, any thoughts or questions for Patty? If not, I'll move on. Pardon me, Miss Spring. Um, we'll move on to the WASB twenty-twenty-two resolution proposals. Uh, just a reminder that, uh, if you have any proposals for resolutions, if you could get them to, uh, Ms. Galvano or, um, our interim board secretary, uh, by August twelfth, and then we will be discussing those at our next board meeting on August sixteenth. And then we will move on to the announcements section, so I'll turn it over to Ms. Bowman.
Yeah, so I have two major things to bring up in the La Crosse Public Education Foundation updates. Um, I wanted to note that, um, the community has raised five-hundred thousand dollars to fund the Random Acts of Kindness Fund. Um, this covers students' basic needs like clothing, school supplies, hygiene materials, sometimes, um, field trip costs. The original goal was three-hundred thousand, and then when that goal was met, it was bumped to four-hundred thousand, and they've just kept growing. And it's been so successful that there is now an endowment fund, uh, the Random Acts of Kindness Forever Fund, which will offset about two-thirds of the cost of that fund each year. So it won't be so dependent on annual fundraising. Um, so the, you know, a big thank you to the community, a big thank you to our, um, the folks who donated for supporting that and turning out for our students. Um, the other thing I want to mention is the Charlie Miller Bowtie Classic is coming up September fourth, and, um, the, uh, Bowtie Classic Golden Ticket Raffle is underway this month. So there's some really amazing prizes for these raffles, and all of this will help fund the classroom grants and other, um, LPEF projects. That's what I've got.
Thank you very much. Um, I don't have any announcements this evening. Uh, the only one I had was about the Wasby Resolution, so we've got that under control. And so I'll turn it over to Dr. Harsy in place of Superintendent Engel.
And I don't know exact, I see his categories. I don't know exactly what he wants to say, but if you allow me to speculate a little bit, I'll...
Sure. Feel free.
I wrote some notes. Yeah. So, here's what I'm guessing. In terms of long-range facility plan, that, that work is ongoing, of course, and last week, um, I had a chance to, to connect, uh, early, there was a, uh, meeting with the chamber, um, last week. It was held virtually, and it sounds like, if I heard correctly, Kelly, maybe thirty to thirty-five to forty participants, and it, uh, went quite well. And, um, so those meetings continue, and, and Dr. Engel does a great job facilitating those. Uh, August twelfth, there's going to be a meeting with the mayor and the city council, so that's upcoming. Uh, and, and continuing the work, there's a draft of a survey, there'll be a community survey, so there's a draft being, uh, worked on right now of that survey. And so, uh, obviously gonna, uh, solicit as much information and data as possible as we go forward with this process. So I'm guessing those would be some of the highlights he would, uh, want the group to know about. And I think that there's a presentation coming up from, for Hogan at the end of the month as well. And so lots of different, uh, contact points, ongoing work there. Uh, on terms of, in terms of COVID-nineteen update, um, uh, at our forty-five-fifteen schools, so our year-round schools, Hamilton and Northside, uh, students were wearing masks today. Uh, and I'm sure that that's something that he'd want. Yeah, I think maybe with the update, he mentioned that, but he'd want the, the group and the community to be a, to be aware of. Uh, and then, um, and obviously, we're keeping, you know, communication lines open and watching, watching all those data points very, very closely. And then with the WASB, uh, you know, there's, there was information here on our, our actual agenda, but, uh, late October, the twenty-eighth, uh, I think they're going to be at Stony Creek and on Alaska for the regional meeting. I'm seeing some head, that's accurate?
Yes.
Okay. So my guess is, uh, for those interested in attending, I mean, it's right in our backyard here, so...
We should have gotten a flyer, you know, I did. I don't know if the new board members did, or... It was a flyer that came from Wasby that tells every meeting. But typically, will you be sending something around for us to sign up, so you can sign up for us?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And then there's also a pre...
Yeah, there's a, what's it on? Pre-work, or workshop?
Pre-workshop, but it's about, uh, how to talk about, talk with people at board me, at board mem, uh, board meetings. So I don't know how, um, relevant it is with coherent governance, but it's certainly always an educational point for people to go forward with. They're, they're pretty good, the, the workshops are.
And you get credit for them? So you actually get points for going to Wasby, um, uh, meetings and educational points and for going to the state, uh, convention? And then what happens is you get recognized throughout the years for however many points that you get, so...
Wonderful. Then we will move on to agenda planning.
I'll make a motion to approve the August sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one Board of Education Agenda with any additions or corrections.
Second?
Moved by Mr. Corburg and second by Ms. Como to approve the August sixteenth, two-thousand twenty-one Board of Agenda, Board of Education Agenda with any additions or corrections. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion has carried. We'll move on to the board debriefing, and, you know, anybody want to chime in about what do you think went well, or anything that we could improve in, in our board meetings? Any thoughts? Okay. I think we did a great job. I think, um, there was a lot of great discussion, a lot of great questions. I think, you know, I'm, I'm really excited for digging into, uh, more of these items as we move forward. And of course, uh, the school year is just around the corner for, for our other schools that have not started yet, so looking forward to that excitement coming forward and potentially even getting some school showcases back on our agenda, so, yes.
I'm going to ask Dr. Harsy a question. On that August twelfth meeting with the city, are board members allowed to attend that meeting?
Yeah, yeah, I would think so, for sure.
Just coordinate that with Dr. Engel?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, with Kelly.
Yeah.
Partially be virtual, too, so you can attend from home if you'd like.
Thank you.
All right. All right, with that, then, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.